Any in there if you want to turn on your microphones, please?
I'll show that, huh?
Oh, it's got.
I don't see that one. We're all the microphones.
You've got one there, don't you?
He doesn't. There's just two in this whole thing.
Oh, you have more?
Yeah.
Eric, we've got more.
Usually we have one for everybody. There's a lot of important things to say. Put one here. There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, this is the regular city council meeting for the city of Now Then. It's April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven p.m. in the evening. This is a Thursday this month. Frank, would you please call roll?
Certainly. Mayor Pillon?
Here.
Councilmember Walters?
Here.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
We have to call everybody else, Mayor?
I just had mentioned who's here.
Lieutenant Jacobson is here, Chief Schmidt is here, Planner Stockman is here, interim city clerk Johnson is here as well.
All right, and we have one council member excused to... For some reason, want to come back from Florida in this weather. I don't understand. All right, we will call for a motion to amend or approve agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Oh, the... I have something on the consent agenda to change.
Okay.
I want to move the approval resolution of I, twenty twenty-two dash ten, move it over to city council items.
The farmers market resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move K to a discussion for city council as well.
And that's the cost sharing?
Yep.
Any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I will motion to approve the agenda as amended, moving items I and K down to the city council discussion portion.
So moved.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Greenberg, second to Councilmember Blake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, consent agenda. Number of items on the consent agenda tonight. Approval of city council meeting minutes, regular meeting, March tenth, twenty twenty-two. Approval of claims from March tenth, twenty twenty-two through April fifth, twenty twenty-two, and a treasurer's report. Approval of resolution twenty twenty-two oh seven, appointing a temporary maintenance employee. Approval of resolution twenty twenty-two oh eight, authorizing purchase and installation of security cameras, electronic door locks for the city buildings. E is approval of temporary habitat permit for Brian Wyshelt. F is approval of resolution twenty twenty-two oh nine, changing vendor for city uniforms, safety shoes, and towels. Does that include rugs as well, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And rugs? I am G, approval of request from Northern Heritage Festival Committee for monetary donations and staff participation in the Heritage Festival in the fall. H, approval of resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, designating use of our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two ARPA funds, which is the federal COVID funds. I...
It was actually L, Mr. Mayor, that...
Yes.
That Blake pulled down.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Looked like an eye.
Capital I, right?
I say, yep. I, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve, revising planning and zoning commission policy on commission structure, meeting order, and general procedure. J, approving of resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, extending contract with Ellers and Associates for financial planning. K and L have been moved. M, approval of complete culvert repairs one hundred and eighty-fifth, just west of County Road Five. And item N, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, increase the city credit card collective limit with Pine River State Bank to seventy-five hundred dollars and authorize authorization to secure credit cards. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Motion by Councilmember Blake?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Greenberg. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're going to go to a public hearing. And for those of you that signed in to speak on the floor items, this is actually the time for public hearing. So if you're here for that, this is a public hearing, we will take your input. So we are first of all going to open the public hearing. We are opening the public hearing at seven oh seven. And this is consideration of the vacation of the twenty-foot trail easement from two-hundred-and-fourth along Potassium Street to its southerly temporary cul-de-sac terminus. And so the council has initiated this. We have three couples that have signed up to speak on this. So Paul and Nancy Dietz, you're up first. If you'd please come to the podium, make sure our green light is on, and then give us your name and your address, please.
I'm Paul Dietz. This is my wife Nancy. We live where the easement would be, and we support the vacation of this easement. This easement would run about three houses to a dead-end street. There's really no purpose in spending the money there. There's a lot of ways we could spend money out there versus putting in something that doesn't get used. There's virtually no traffic, very few houses, and it really doesn't make any sense. And all the neighbors on the side of the easement, or on the side of the road that the easement would continue if it wasn't vacationed, are of the same opinion as I. So we do have a petition to continue with the vacation of the easement.
And I believe that's been part of the record, so.
So I appreciate that we were notified. We would like to see it go through successfully. Thank you.
And maybe, I made a mistake, I give Planner Stockman a chance just so, before people do speak any further, just to make sure it's clarified what it is we're vacating. I think there's some confusion on that in the neighborhood. We're not vacating that part that's already built? Just the part that hasn't been built?
Correct.
So.
Yes.
But Planner Stockman wants to... If you can just give us a quick synopsis on that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you note on the map here, I've indicated with a blue dotted line the existing trail that runs from Cleary Road down part of Potassium, turns on two-hundred-and-fourth Lane, and continues down Sodium Street. There is a future planned regional trail for Old Viking running east-west in this location. When... First of all, the checkmarks you see on the map are the properties that are in agreement for vacation of the trail easement. The twenty-foot trail easement, which was established as part of Hoffman Hills Platte. This segment here, shown in red, would be what is being vacated. When the Woodhaven Platte, shown below here, came through, we discussed park and trail options. And because Potassium Street is becoming a permanent cul-de-sac rather than extending down through this platte, it was thought best at that time to discuss vacating this segment. You'll see these blue lines here, this is all wetland that was delineated at the beginning stages of the platte. So not having that information when Hoffman Hills was developed, that was some deterrent to extending a road, much less a trail. The really only possible extension of this could be out to Cleary Road, which is not a desirable walking environment along the busy road there.
Very agreed.
It could be done, but at the planning and zoning, when we had a public hearing for Woodhaven, it was discussed that that would not be a preferable option. So that is where we stand. Again, the people that signed the petition, which is not a legal document, it's just an indication or an agreement between these landowners about what they wish to see happen. The green checkmarks are in favor of the vacation. I will read some statements that we received by email, a couple being from the couple that lives at this address here with the red X. So I will enter those into public record. And then this is the official exhibit, shown in gray here for the vacation. Also being vacated would be this little half-moon temporary cul-de-sac in favor of a permanent cul-de-sac, which takes up slightly more land area and abuts the Woodhaven North property line. So the actual physical cul-de-sac is not changing. It will be maintained as it is with just slightly different configuration for right-of-way. That allows the maintenance personnel to come down the cul-de-sac and push snow straight ahead into this extra right-of-way area and then clear out the rest of the circle as they normally would. One other comment I wanted to make about trails. Our office did prepare the park and trail plan that was adopted in two thousand and nine, and an updated map was adopted just last year as part of our comprehensive plan update. And these pink lines on our trail map are indicative of local roads. We actually include potential trail corridors identified as on city streets to be part of our trail plan. With the limited staff and the rural nature of Now Then, we can't expect to see trails in every development like some of the suburbs. So that is part of the analysis too, or part of our overall plan. Right here is the subject property. This is Hoffman Hills, and then the Woodhaven Development. So the pink lines again are what we call on-street trails. They would always be intended as a local street with less traffic, but are intended to be included as our overall pedestrian transportation system. So having said that, I'm going to read the email comments that we received. Gavin O'Connell at two zero four zero zero Potassium Street. Pardon me. "Council members and staff, I am one of the homeowners who currently have a portion of the existing trail on my property. When we purchased this land, it was not known that a sidewalk was being planned, and we tried our hardest at the time not to have one run through our front yard. Likely for all of the same reasons you are hearing this evening. However, I'm glad that the decision was made to put it in. At the time, we did not have any children, and since then, we have grown our small family with children and pets and have utilized the sidewalk over the years and still do. There is so much foot traffic in this neighborhood that I think extending it would be a benefit to all." Ashley O'Connell at two zero four...
Liz, could you tell us where they are on the map there?
So this is the...
Red X.
Gavin and Ashley live here.
So they're not... Technically, the trail's not in their yard?
No.
Correct. So Ashley states that, "As a homeowner in this neighborhood, I personally use the existing trail on two-hundred-and-fourth and the north portion of Potassium Street daily, and I would love for that trail to be extended. At the moment, people of all ages do walk and ride this road where the trail easement is located. I witnessed many near accidents due to vehicles driving too fast or poor road conditions where children and adults are slipping and tripping from leftover winter debris. I do understand that these trails are not maintained, but nonetheless, they are improvement to walking on the roads, especially with pets and young children. The majority of homeowners here also use it on a regular basis, and there are a number of people from outside Hoffman Hills that come here, use the trails, and walk their pets since there is not another safe trail within miles. With an easement already in place, why would the city not utilize that prior to someone getting hurt? When we purchased this property, we were told by the developer that this trail would likely be built, and we were excited that our young ones would be able to visit their friends' houses without the fear of walking on the road. The existing trail actually aided in the decision-making process when deciding to move to this neighborhood. As the neighborhood grows and more and more young drivers are on our roads, I think the need for the trail has never been so necessary. And frankly, I do not understand why the discussion is happening regarding vacating the easement. In fact, if the decision is made to vacate the trail, I think there should be a discussion moving forward in regards to the existing trail. The city was not lenient at all on that trail when it was built, and almost every homeowner tried defending themselves at the time for it not to go in. If we don't need a trail on the south side of Potassium, why do we need a trail anywhere else in Hoffman Hills?" And then one final email from Timothy Anderson, and I was not able to determine where he resides.
If I may, I could show you.
Oh, okay.
And the first email you read, Liz, where was that person located?
That was the husband to Ashley. They both live with the red X.
Husband and wife.
Okay, so the trail isn't in there. Across the street from you.
So Tim Anderson is where?
If you follow the blue line all the way almost back to sixty-six, he's right on the very corner. You can see that little white tab up higher.
Oh, up here, okay.
Right there. I'd like to hear what he has to say because I don't believe half of what you just read.
Okay.
That's why we have public hearings.
And there's other couples here that don't believe half of what she just read either.
Well, that's why I thought it was important to get her portion in here before we had the other speakers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Anderson says, "I have been a resident here for over fifteen years, and although I do not have a sidewalk on my property, there is one on my road opposite from me. Extending or not extending the sidewalk really doesn't impact me, but I wanted to voice my concern. Residents from outside this development drive here and park in my driveway with permission so they have a safe place to walk their dogs and young children. They don't feel safe walking sixty-six and prefer to drive here, which I completely understand. Others that live close enough to walk here from outside of the development also utilize the Hoffman Hills trails. And I know for a fact that if the trails were extended to the cul-de-sac, that it would be used just as much as the existing one. Lastly, if it is decided to vacate the trail, I would like to hear the decision-making process as a resident so I can understand the purpose of the existing trail. Homeowners maintain those trails all year long with snow removal and cleaning winter carnage off them in the spring. I am sure if vacating trails is an option, those homeowners will be just fine to let them go too. I look forward to watching the recording. Thank you." That is it for the public hearing, the comments that I have. So back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So Paul, we've heard from you. Let's hear from Jason and Heidi.
I'm Heidi Nielsen. This is my husband, Jason Nielsen, and we live at two zero four zero seven Potassium Street, which the trail is set to go through our front yard. We'd just like to bring up the point that there's literally no traffic on this road. So if people want to walk, they can walk. We have acreage lots, and all the kids, including the O'Connells, have four-wheelers. They will not drive them four-wheelers on the trails. They're going to drive them on the road. They do not walk to their friends. They ride their bikes. They ride their four-wheelers. Nobody rides the trails. If you walk on that two-hundred-and-fourth trail, you can walk, hmm, sometimes, I don't know, a hundred feet before there's a pothole or a cone that somebody has to put up because that pothole keeps growing and that trail keeps collapsing. That trail needs so much maintenance that... I mean, you can't hardly walk on it. I can't tell you. So, and the O'Connells do not walk on that trail. We have not seen them walk on that trail. We walk our dog almost every day and have yet to see them walk. So as far as that goes, I think that's, you know, that's a false statement from them. I have honestly... How many people have we encountered on our walks? Maybe like, we see Jody occasionally. We see, you know, a couple, a couple other people occasionally. And I mean, we're on these trails or on this, you know, on a walk through the neighborhood almost daily. And nobody walks through this. This is going to be a trail literally to nowhere. This goes to nowhere. It's going to a dead end. You're going to be crossing, you know, all four properties.
With dirt driveways.
With dirt driveways. He... They have beautiful paver driveway. I mean, how is this gonna, you know, how is this gonna benefit anybody? Is my question. Who does this benefit? Because it sure isn't the people that live there that is... It's not going to do anything for us. Do you have any other points that you wanted to bring up?
I don't think so.
I haven't been given anything offhand.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we have Eric and Jody.
I'm Mayor Claus. My wife, Jody. I think they pretty much...
Get your address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Two zero three four nine Potassium Street Northwest. So in the cul-de-sac is where we live. I'm fully under... I was understood when this development... Salt of us was going to get developed that this road, when it went through, was going to have a bike path. And we knew that going into this. But now things have changed a little bit. We had to grant easement to the cul-de-sac to make it a permanent cul-de-sac. I'm fine with that. I just don't see, like Heidi and Paul said, why you have to extend a trail that really, to me, wouldn't get used. We don't feel unsafe at all in our neighborhood. Maybe one thing I was thinking about that might help our neighborhood from all the way from Cleary all the way down two-hundred-and-fourth, which turns into Sodium. I think if we're looking at safety here, I think some speed limit signs would be a really good thing for us. Assuming it's a thirty mile an hour road, so... I could see a speed limit sign off the two-hundred-and-fourth Avenue right off sixty-six. Also, coming off of Old Viking, going north on Sodium would be a really good thing for everybody. And then also, since this is going to become a permanent dead end, if the O'Connells are worried about traffic and everything, we could put a dead-end sign right at the corner of two-hundred-and-fourth Lane and Potassium. That would let everybody know that's not familiar with our development, that it's just a turnaround. And I think that would cut down a little traffic, and hopefully they would like that, so.
I think that certainly, Frank, if you want to take note, we can't put no outlet or dead end. Certainly, that's within the city responsibility. The speed limit, we would have to check. Technically, it's a fifty-five road. If it's not marked, it's a fifty-five road.
Okay, well, I think...
Because of the acreage.
Okay.
So what we would have to do is we go back and we see the distance between driveways. And because it's a city street, if we have the appropriate distance between driveways, then we can lower the speed limit as a city. But we'd have to see what the regulations are because if the driveways are too far apart, the state steps in.
Okay, well, I think that's something that needs to be addressed because there's fifty-five miles an hour. I don't think you could really even stay on the road too well.
There's a whole bunch of roads like that around here.
I know, but let's look into it then. Let's get some more speeds.
So Frank has noted that, that we will investigate.
Yeah, that'd be great, so.
Speed limit. And I think to the point that if people knew it was a dead end.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that, you know, so. That'd be good.
And my neighbor Eric, if I can interject. You're being kind enough to allow the cul-de-sac easement further into his mind.
Oh, you should have seen us twist his arm at the point. No, we appreciate that, that it was cooperative, so.
Yeah, you know, I've had good meetings with Larry and his planner, and things have gone well up to this point, you know, so. One thing I'd like to note on the email that you received, that you read from, I don't know if it was Gavin or Ashley, but there's a lot of false statements in there. Not going to really rip on them too bad, but they knew coming into this that they already had two kids, you know, and they... Everything was established, and they probably didn't even know about this bike path easement, to be honest. But if it would have went through, that's the way it is. I get it. But it's not. The road's not extending. So I think there's some personal stuff here. So I'd like the council to kind of think about that, too, so. That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. So Liz, could you put up the park and trail map again, please?
Sure.
Typically, we have a neighborhood trail like that. And we do try and work these into all of our newer developments so that we have some intentionally connected trails. It's not intended to be a community trail where you come and park and walk there, but we are always looking for that as we develop. Where can people get to places and walk? As north of here, we have the Morton Farm Preserve, and they have a very nice nature trail that very few people know about. But it's got a parking area in the neighborhood, and then there's about forty acres of trail that people can go back on, walk their dogs, and they clean up after them. We'd appreciate it. But there's very nice walking back there, which is a little more intentional because there is off-road parking, and it is out of the neighborhood. When we do develop neighborhoods, we do try and have a trail or a sidewalk planned so that we can connect neighborhoods together, so there are plans. This one here obviously changed when Woodhaven Project was able to go in without any roads. And so it changed that, and, you know, the discussion of planning and zoning was, why do we take the trail, which we do need to do a better job maintaining? And Frank, hopefully, you got that, too, that we need to look at the potholes on that trail. But the trails we do have, we want to be able to maintain. And so adding more trails that go nowhere if we're not able to maintain them is not a good use of the funds. That being said, the city has no intention to take those trails we have invested in and vacating those at this point. People are accustomed to those, and it's just our job to make sure they're maintained, but we're not developing new ones and then having to have continual maintenance on that. Liz, anything else we need to know at this point?
No, I think you did a good job summarizing. Just for property owners' information, we still do have that twenty-foot extra right-of-way requirement in our ordinance. But that allows us the option to take it or not take it from certain developments. And in Woodhaven, for instance, it just wasn't feasible. But we do try to make connections. But with the regional trail forthcoming and the existing trail there, I think we've done a good job summarizing the reasons why this vacation does make some sense.
Liz, can I just, just to clarify? If the council agrees to vacate this portion of the trail, what you were saying is, in our plans overall, when... when, when new developments are plotted, there still remains trails in there.
Correct.
This is the exception to that. But this is not to say we're still keeping the 20 feet on their property for potential future plans.
Right, exactly.
This vacating would be a total vacation, and that would, property would go to the property owners?
Yes, the property gets, well, they, they own it already. It's an easement, so we're just vacating that easement.
Doesn't change our taxes.
Right, right.
But it's just the city's not gonna come in and put pavement down.
We, we no longer have a right to go in and build a trail without, yeah.
But that does not impact other developments yet to be planned. Any other questions from the audience? We, been clear? Questions from the council?
None for me?
No.
All right. That being said, I will close the public hearing. And we do have the petition, though it's not official document, we do have the petition as part of the packet, and we have the three emails as part of the packet.
Yeah.
And I think at this point, council have enough information that you would like to vote on this?
Yep.
All right. I will accept a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion to vacate the 20-foot trail easement from 204th Long Potassium to its southerly cul-de-sac.
Okay, a motion from Councilmember Alders, a second by Councilmember Blake. Any other discussion? Liz, did we cover the findings of fact thoroughly enough for the record?
Yes, the reasons are stated in your resolution, and I repeated all those in my presentation.
Okay. All right, that being said, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your time and your, your involvement.
We appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good Easter.
Thank you, you, too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, public, the floor items, we have none. Nobody signed up for floor items tonight, so we will continue on with the sheriff's report. Lieutenant Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Following is a summary of the activity in the city of Now Then for March of 2022. We responded to a total of 108 calls in the city of Now Then. That includes five calls to the Bar Nun facility, excuse me, eight alarm calls, I'm sorry, four alarm calls, eight medicals, and four animal calls, one of which we'll talk about a little bit more. The Bar Nun calls generally runaway calls that were resolved without, without incident. Some, some calls on the radar for the city in March. 1-8-0-100 block of, boy, Zeolith, is that correct?
Zenith.
Zeolith, yeah.
Thank you. We did have a dog bite report that, um,
We noticed Potassium.
There was a, a, a dog that did run off its, off its property where it lives. It attacked a passerby, a passerby dog that was walking. Been working closely with city staff on that matter, and working through the potentially dangerous ordinance, and been working with the city administrator on that. So that is currently active and pending, that investigation. 8600 Block of 225th, we assisted the fire department on a large brush fire. Not sure if you're talking more about that, but we did issue a citation on that one. And an interesting call on Viking Boulevard. We had a deputy on patrol that noticed a vehicle that was driving fully in the south side ditch, driving in the ditch. The vehicle had it, had its hazard lights on. Our, our deputy also did note it was a hazard and investigated. He found that the, the front of the vehicle had heavy front-end damage. He, he stopped the vehicle and conducted an investigation and did determine that it was, it was a DUI situation. That driver was arrested over twice, the legal limit. The on-scene investigation by our deputies indicated the damage was probably from entering the south side ditch there at speed, and then he was unable to navigate out. And one of our folks on patrol did encounter him. So again, we always encourage folks to, please, plan for a sober, sober ride. We're out and about all the time. We're, we're in the city and in the area. You know, we work all night, we're never really, not around. So that is one of our priorities on patrols, looking for impaired drivers. So again, we encourage everyone to please, 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 plan a sober ride, so. That summarizes what I have for you for the month of March. There'll be more to report on the dog bite situation as that case unfolds, and we continue to work through the ordinance on that one. So any other questions, or anything else I can help with?
Counsel?
Good work, Park.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
I guess I have one. So are we still on track for June, July rollout?
July 1st is where we're set. The substation, we've worked with the fire department on that. Deputies have bid, so we know what deputies will be working in the city for that contract, for that dedicated 12 hours. And you'll, you folks will meet them, I think we're planning for July for that, after the contract starts, the new contract. I will warn you, one of the deputies that will be patrolling your city is also named Bill Jacobson. We're not related, but he's a deputy that's working with us for quite some time, and he, he's excited to, excited to move to this contract. It shortens his commute significantly, and he's looking forward to reporting the work in the city of Now Then, as opposed to Donant Handover. So work continues, we're working on infrastructure and technology. So, yeah, we're on track, so good.
So the, we do have at least one deputy lives in town here. Did they happen to bid for it?
You know, I, I don't know which deputy that is that lives in town here, but I know that there are, I was given the two names, and I'm blanking on the second name, but that would shorten that deputy's commute significantly as well, so I'm not sure.
She managed to remember Bill Jacobson?
That one's easy to remember, yeah.
Did, did you warn Deputy Bill Jacobson to take care of your reputation?
You know, he's been doing a fairly decent job. We actually work.
So you need to take care of his reputation.
That's probably accurate. We actually work together at my fire department as well, at the Centennial Lakes Police Department, so.
Cool.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Good.
Who's following who?
Well, he followed me there, and then I followed him here. How does that sound?
Well, thank you. So on the, you're getting the office set up for the substation there? Have we figured out the split on the computers? Has that been?
I met with Arvig today, and we located areas where we want the internet connection, both within the office space that would facilitate the fire department and the sheriff's office with equal amount of working space dedicated for each. We also located some areas in the training room where we wanted to make sure we had internet connectivity, and they also located some areas for Wi-Fi. So that was completed this afternoon, I believe.
And who's doing the install on the hardware?
I'm sorry?
Who's doing the install on the hardware?
I'm not familiar with the company that's doing the actual install.
Is that RB?
Yes, pardon me.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Move on to the fire department. Got work session last week.
Did you want to report before we get that far? Mayor and council, just a brief overview for activities related to the fire department during the first quarter of 2022. The fire department responded to 69 incidents for the first quarter of 2022 with an average response time of 14 minutes and 27 seconds. Of the 69 incidents, 40 calls were medically.
Excuse me, chief, what was the time on that?
14 minutes and 27 seconds.
And your target is?
We shoot for 10, so we're a little bit over. That tends to happen when we have the type of weather we've had over the past few months. With the slick roads, that tends to slow down our response time a little bit. 40 of those calls were medical, medical-related calls. 29 calls for service were fire-related. The fire department averaged 4.2 firefighters responding per incident. The fire department recorded $300,000 in property loss from fire. $250,000 of property loss was reported on January 21st, 2022, at 1810 hours for a pole shed on fire on the 6700 Block of 213th. It was a rather large pole shed with an awful lot of equipment. And it was a very cold night that night. That was followed up a few days later with a $50,000 loss on January 23rd, 2022, at 8:07 in the morning, for another pole shed on fire on the 20300 Block of Twin Parkway. Again, another very cold morning. Additionally, the fire department has responded to four grass fires already this year. Looking outside today and the past week, you would've never guessed, but grass fire season has entered the picture. Onto the fleet.
And there, there are burning restrictions on, correct?
Correct. Burning restrictions are on. Burning permits will not be cut until the DNR lifts those restrictions. I would anticipate it'll probably be close to May before those, before the restrictions are lifted. It'll depend on the frost breaking and the continued precipitation, so. Oddly enough, the same day the burning restrictions went on, we had a 236-acre grass fire in St. Francis on Monday, so. Well timed by the DNR. Onto the fleet, the duty officer vehicle, otherwise known as Squad 1, has been completed and is in service for use. Unfortunately, the rest of the fleet has suffered some maladies over the past couple weeks. Rescue 1 spent three weeks in the shop for an exhaust leak from the turbo. Turns out, it's really bad when you have exhaust leaking into the cab. That has been repaired. Grass 1 spent four weeks in the shop to isolate and correct an electrical short. They ended up swapping out a four-gauge wire to a two-gauge wire, isolated what was tripping the codes, and that seems to have fixed the problem. The repairs combined cost the city about $2,500 for both of those vehicles. The current Tanker 1 is having a power steering pump repaired due to a leaking, leaking plumbing feeding the power steering pump. We're just waiting on a part, and that will be repaired. We did hear from E1, the anticipated completion date for the tanker, the new tanker, is January of 2023. I would anticipate that that will be further delayed, but we're crossing our fingers. As far as equipment facilities, a laptop was ordered and has been delivered to Assistant Chief Schrag. We have ordered a new desktop for the station as well. The latest updated Windows on that computer was Windows 7, so we're entering the 21st century with our desktop. Arvig has been to the station to map out the internet plugs and Wi-Fi locations. We've also ordered a new suction device for medical emergency care. Some nozzles for firefighting have been placed into service. After the storm on Tuesday, the septic system alarm sounded at the station, which has also been reported to Public Works. We've received three quotes for a municipal well. As we talked about at the work session, the inflation is certainly hitting that industry as well, not only in costs, but the availability of pipe has become problematic. For a standalone well at this point, the cheapest bid that we have received to date is $115,000. We are now moving on to pricing out potential public and private relationships to see if we can augur down that cost just a little bit. And Chief Schrag is leading that initiative. We're also submitting grant applica, I'm sorry?
Could, could I just ask?
Yes.
In that, since, since we had work on that previously, if, if you could at least contact me so I can?
He is aware to contact you.
Okay.
Yep. We have grant applications in process for Center Point for some new AEDs, and we're gonna submit a grant to the Minnesota DNR for turnout gear. And lastly, onto personnel. We had one member resign during the first quarter of 2022 during, due to personal reasons. One new hire began their firefighter training at the Anoka County Fire Academy. We have begun the process of interviewing for captain's positions and plan on bringing a recommendation back to council for, in May for appointments. And lastly, next weekend, the Minnesota State Fire Department's Association is hosting its annual conference. As part of that conference, they'll be having a memorial service for the late Assistant Chief Bart Haft. Bart's family will be in attendance for that, so that'll be a nice.
Where, where will that be?
That's in Wilmington. They have not held their conference for the last couple years due to COVID, so they're finally circling back and getting caught up. And one of the things that they're gonna do is have that memorial service for Bart.
And for, for those that can't make it to Wilmington for that, if you could bring something from us in the city to, to share our appreciation and our honor for Bart and his family?
Absolutely, we'll do. You're welcome, sir. That's it for me. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
How many candidates are we looking at for captains right now?
Two for sure, potentially three. So one of the things that we're certain on is we would like to split it up between operations and training. I think one of the things that we have recognized, back to your comment regarding burn permits, with how many burn permits get processed, and there are some potentially problematic burn permits, we think it might be appropriate to add a captain that is in charge of fire prevention. And that would also parlay into organizing things like Heritage Days and the Threshing Festival, and Boy Scout visits to the fire station, so somebody that's really connecting with the community on that fire prevention level.
Think you might have more candidates than you have openings?
As of right now, we have more candidates than openings.
That's a good.
It's a good broad match.
All right, counsel, anything else as far as the general report, quarterly report?
Good job.
All right. Now we'll go on to the one on the list here, the statewide volunteer firefighter pension plan. So we had a work session last week. And there was a question as to what the different options would look like. One, did we qualify for the state aid from 2021? And if so, what, what do we anticipate that amount would be? Or what does the state anticipate that amount would be? And how does that impact our cost going forward with this, this plan? So if you look in your packet, you will see the information, the most current information, from the state of Minnesota. Do you have this information?
I didn't get the latest updates.
At the last minute, they went out very late.
And I'm gonna ask you to, to go into your packet, and you're free to look through all of the options. So the, the options that were requested to model out were benefits payable to the firefighters upon their vesting. And we asked the state to look at options of $2,000 per firefighter, $2,500, $3,000, and $3,500. We also asked the state for the instructions of the council. It's, should be fairly early on in the packet.
Fairly early on?
It's, it's this far in.
Let me see what it looks like.
You're gonna see the RCA, and then the items are gonna look like this.
And that's right after the petition for the easement, or somewhere right in that split section.
Okay.
I got it, I'm sure.
I'm getting there. Is it after you're done? This is.
Yeah, I got it.
ARPA money, is it after that?
This was a very big packet.
Let's see.
Let me get you.
That's not right. Let's see, what's this though?
No, what's that?
No, that's my thing. Yeah, I probably stepped out of the chairs and I can't figure out what's in this petition.
It's after that.
Like, okay. Am I the last person to find it?
All right. Chief Schmidt, you've got it?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the first part of the packet is the RCA. Second page of the packet is the potential resolution. And then you'll find the individual breakouts of the options that we asked the state to consider. I'm going to look through the. So let me read the RCA, that might help answer some of the questions. Conclusion of the April 7th, 2022 work session, the city council directed the following questions to be answered and actions taken. In the first five years of the pension program, can the city make changes to the annual benefits amount or city contributions? The answer is the city may increase, but not decrease the benefit level in any year. And so far as the city contribution goes, the city may not decrease a required contribution. A required contribution is one required to sustain the pension program at at least 100% funding level. The city may reduce or increase a voluntary contribution. And what we're talking about here is voluntary contributions at this point. Second question, does the PERA factor in the number of people who drop out before vesting, who were once vested, never received pension for some reason? The actuarial model does consider these factors in the overall calculation, but does not do so explicitly. So they have a general rounding figure, but they don't have a specific to the program that we have here. The city now has 14 firefighters, will PERA make calculations on the original 12 or change it to 14? The answer is the original 12 will provide adequate protections for the program. And then fourthly, can you run the pension benefit at $2,500, $3,000, and $3,500 for at least six years? So we can see the impact of the sixth year. Yes, please see the attachments. In the above analysis, can you also assume an annual contribution, city contribution voluntarily, at $7,000, $10,000, or $15,000 for that six-year period? Yes, please see attached. So what you'll see is those iterations that Frank asked the state to provide for us. Looking at the goals of building our equity as quickly as possible, so when people do start taking the funding, the intention was to try and get it fully funded as quickly as possible. Also to not overobligate the city on the front end, so we could build the equity. The other consideration was because you can change the amount of benefit upwards, but you can't go backwards. The consideration was start as a reasonably lower number. And then when people can finally are vested in year six, the potential is to raise the benefit amount at that point, providing the program is fully funded at that point. So when they do come into year six and can start taking their pension, again, it's those that have served five years, and they would at that point get 40% of the vested money. At 10 years, they would get 60%. At 20 years, they would get 100%. Incremental years, it goes up by about 4% a year. So it's not only 5, 10, and 20, but between 5 and 10 it goes up, between 10 and 20 it goes up.
And what's the cap?
The cap is 100% of what's vested at the time. So if, let's say, a firefighter has been here 20 years and we have a benefit package of $3,000, they would get $60,000. That would be their cap. Now, if we move by the time they get to their 20th year, we've moved that benefit level up to 4,000, they would get $80,000. This chart is to make sure that we're always tracking, and they will, they will, state will update this twice a year. With Chief Schmidt's year-end report, and then just before budget time, they will say, you're on track to stay fully funded, or you're dipping down and you need to make adjustments. So the state will help us keep on track. So the.
What does the state consider fully funded? Is it 100% or is it 100?
100%. 100%. And anything over that is in the plus.
Is it a one-time payout?
Yes.
Yes. They have to be at least 50 years of age to get the money. And then it would be a one-time payout. So if you take a look in your packet, you will find one sheet with three aspects on it.
Okay.
So if you want to take a look at the variety of options, what you'll see is we don't get to fully funded until year three or sometimes later, depending on what options we picked. So the.
Which is fine.
Which is fine, because the option here, if we went with $2,500 benefit for the first five years, when nobody can take out anyway, it allows us to build equity. And also, if you take a look at the chart here, in year one, it was determined by the state we would qualify for the state aid. That was a question we had last time. If we didn't get the state aid, we're in the hole for whatever amount we invest that first year. So our accrued liability, which again is another one of these worksheets where the state took the 12 firefighters and calculated the liability each year. So the longer they're in, the increased amount, the closer they get to age 50, that amount increases. So each year that increases. But the first year, if we commit to $2,500 in benefits, our responsibility is $16,320 plus there's a membership fee of $360 a year to be part of this plan. Also, because we aren't fully funded at that point, there's a penalty, which you'll see on there. And that is line J, I'm sorry, line I, and it's $1,632, which is 10% of the amount we owe. So that would be a negative. So all totaled, our financial requirements in that first year would be $19,291. With the state aid, we would have $26,362. We would owe no additional monies at that point. With our contribution of $10,000 and the state aid from the next year, again, you can see that we stay ahead of the requirement, and we start building interest. The bottom line there is interest at 6%.
So why wouldn't we go with $7,000 versus $10,000?
That's an option. That option is in here also.
Where is that one? Page before?
Page before that.
Okay.
It still shows us 147% solvent that year, six.
And what would be the monthly payout?
It's the same.
Same, $2,500.
It's just how much, it's what you're banking on happens in year six and what you project you're going to change the $2,500 to.
And that's what the state is still looking to send to Frank, is if that goes up to 3,000, what does that look like in year six? The, by going at 7,000, the interest rate's a little lower. You can take a look, it's $180 less in interest in that second year, and $360 less in the third year. So the interest rate is one of the benefits of growing the program. The line I, we're still in the negative in year two, only by $26. And then we start into the positive from there on out. And what we're hoping to have is what year six looked like if we went to 3,000. Does that keep us above the 100% funding?
We could change the funding level added in year six as well, right? Because it's a five-year frozen.
Actually, we can change the funding upwards in any year. The city's voluntary.
Okay.
No, we just can't have it go down. The voluntary is, again, that's voluntary on the city's part. But once we offer a benefit, we cannot go down on the benefit. The voluntary contribution by the city is flexible.
When, Mr. Mayor.
That comes from Blake.
When a firefighter retires, does he have to take the pension right away?
Can't take it until they're at least 50.
Oh, so they can't take it until they're 50.
But even if.
It sits there, will it continue to grow?
No.
No?
Because it's a defined benefit.
Okay.
Defined contribution is a different program that would continue to grow with interest rates. But the defined benefit.
Mr. Mayor, what we've seen for people that are retiring, kind of even before 50, but that 50 to 55, so even with this benefit, if they were to withdraw at 52, standard rules still apply, and they'd take that 10% hit. At 55, that 10% early withdrawal goes away. So their money essentially gets frozen, and they become what's called a deferred member. So they're not gaining interest, they're not going to get a higher benefit.
But they can get it.
They're just holding their money in the account till they decide when they're going to.
Sure.
Withdraw. And they get a lump sum, one-time check. The state also offers, when they withdraw, a $1,000 supplemental benefit. That doesn't come out of the city's pocket, that doesn't impact the city, that's something that the state of Minnesota attaches onto their pension. So they would get their $50,000 check if they had 20 years. They'd get their $1,000 supplemental benefit from the state. Their money's out of the account, and it's gone.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
If they would pass away, does it go to the spouse or is that absorbed in the fund?
So long as they indicate that there is a survivor, then their spouse would be eligible for those funds.
If they were vested.
If they're vested.
If they're vested.
They would be eligible at the vesting of the time of passing. So if it was four years, there's nothing, and that goes back into the pool.
So don't leave before the five years.
If they're five years, they would be vested at 40%. Councilmember Alders?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution of opting to join the statewide volunteer pension plan with a $2,500 defined benefit level, with a yearly $7,000 additional voluntary contribution from the city. That's reviewed yearly in one of Chief Dave's reports to make sure we're solvent.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Alders.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think the $7,000 additional will be adequate.
All right.
Versus the sheet that had the asterisks, which was 10,000 additional. I think 7,000 will.
Well, the good part is, is we can review it yearly enough.
Yeah, we can have it.
If the markets don't do well, we might have to kick more in. If the markets do great, we could decide what we want to decide. But in year five, we can change the contribution level and see what it looks like.
All right. My preference is to be more aggressive upfront, but as long as we've got three votes, we can keep moving forwards. Any other discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? I would prefer the 10, but ayes have it, it's 25 and 7.
Thank you, Mayor, for your effort. Thank you, Frank. It's much appreciated.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your effort and Joe's effort on it too.
Absolutely.
We didn't mean to step on Joe last week, but Frank had more current numbers. I thought it was good to know that we had the state aid. And as long as the state's saying we get that for this year, that's absolutely terrific.
As long as we're all aligned for the same goals, that's what we're worried about.
Yes.
We appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
Thanks.
So you got that, Frank?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. On to planning and zoning.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Thanks for the report.
You're welcome.
Will you be sending a copy of that so we can have a hard copy of your? Say, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing with your new administrator?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to let her know we have a contract for administrative services? Is that?
Yes, so our new administrator was actually our previous community policy director. So she's been well aware of the agreement since its inception, so it's nothing new for her.
It'd probably be nice if she wants to come down here or maybe invite Frank up there just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Woodhaven, nine lot final plat and development agreement. Liz, you want to walk us through what we've got here?
Sure, nine lots.
Hang on, let's make sure everybody's got it in front of them.
We've got a simple RCA. The engineers got together, addressed all the issues. You've got a draft development agreement in front of you. The applicants have reviewed that and are in agreement with what it includes. The right-of-way, the permanent right-of-way will be dedicated to Quick Plan B. And everything looks great. There are really no outstanding issues. One thing to note is that as the site is graded, the developer is going to put in all the culverts, including the culverts at the roadway for the private driveways, so that all those are set and at the proper elevations required in the stormwater plan. That will be a nice little bonus if you want to say that for the people buying the lots, they will not need to apply then for a private driveway permit. Unless you're on the county road.
More timelines, what was that?
So they're going to grade all the driveways in, put the culverts in, because there's so many wetlands that they're crossing and such.
Liz, can you tell what it would normally be?
Pardon me?
So just say what normally would be happening if Mrs. Schoquist wasn't deciding to do that.
Oh, what normally would happen is as each person, as each lot owner came in for a building permit, they would apply for a driveway permit. Joe would go out and determine, you know.
Figure out where they could put it.
Culvert size and everything, yeah. But because there, a lot of the driveways have a couple of different culverts, and it's actually nice that they're going to sort of pre-grade those.
So as long as, just as we're talking about the old Viking there, the potential trail that goes along there, so we don't have the same problem later as we did with Taskin tonight. Will there be some notification to those property owners that there is easement there? Or is there easement?
Yeah, I would be, you know, available to point that out when these lots come through for building permit. I would hope that Mr. Schoquist or his boys in NIH homes would also point that out, just to make the landowners aware. Yeah. They were supposed to, but I don't think they did it.
I didn't see it.
Oh, they did make a note, Mr. Mayor. They just didn't show the 10-foot trail.
Okay.
There is a note on there.
All right.
But it's pretty hard to determine where that's going to go. The county will have to, may have to buy additional land, I don't know. There's a wetland that it would go through, so there's a lot of engineering before that even happens. At the beginning stage of this plat, I did call the county and ask them if they had any more recent plans for installation of that trail, and they said they absolutely have not even thought about it. So it's a ways out.
Probably will never live to see it.
Maybe not in our lifetime.
All right, I'm sorry to interrupt you. What else do you have?
No, that's it. They have addressed all the concerns, which were mostly engineering related to stormwater, and those have all been addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. So our office does recommend approval, subject to the conditions as listed in your findings of fact.
Do we have a resolution?
We had findings that, yeah. They were right with the RCA.
Not the RCA.
I probably got the wrong packet. There's the RCA.
We have five-page findings.
Did you find it?
Looking for a resolution.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
All right, we have five pages of findings. All right. Now also I'll accept a motion.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how to make them.
So there's an RCA and then there's, right behind the RCA is five pages. Technically six pages of findings of fact with signature lines. And then there's the, uh, development agreement, the engineer's report, all part of this packet.
Did you find it, Lina?
I got it.
Please start it, he can make a motion. No, I'm fine.
I assume the attorney has left the, the help agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the Woodhaven nine-lot final plat and development agreement. I move forward with the, um, development of the Woodhaven, um, of the Woodhaven plot.
I second it.
Motion by Councilor Alders, second by Councilwoman Blake, to approve the Woodhaven nine-lot final plat and the developers' agreement in our packet. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
When's the start work going to be done?
Have a good night.
If our fourth winter ever ends, maybe you can get started.
Take care.
Thank you for your patience, gentlemen.
Yes.
All right, second item, bid-to-buy cash farms.
I found that.
You got that one?
I got it, I'm here.
So we are looking at establishing bid-to-buy headquarters, uh, fifty-one sixty Viking Boulevard. It is currently an agricultural parcel with two existing pole sheds and a small office building, uh, which will all be upgraded to meet building code for commercial occupancy. Um, we're looking at a conditional use permit for multiple buildings on a single parcel. That is one set of findings. And then the interim use permit for auto sales and the interim use permit for deviation from commercial paving requirements is a second set of findings. So I will need two separate motions for those actions. This map on the right shows the existing conditions. There is a significant amount of existing impervious surface, which is gravel servicing or recycle. Um, the applicants intend to display their vehicles in these two main areas that are designated here. And the square footage totals, which is this twenty-nine, six fifty and the sixty-three, eighty-five, would be the area within which they can work. So we are not limiting the number of items that can be displayed for sale, but we are limiting the square footage within which these items can be placed. Everything else should be within the buildings or being moved on and off the property. Um, they had to stay within ten thousand square feet or less of new impervious surface area, so there's some being added up front here. And this red area I had to subtract out for now to stay within that ten thousand square feet, which is what triggers stormwater ponding requirements. So even though they've shown proof of parking here, they have plenty of space, in other words, uh, to build parking later if it should be necessary. That does not count against them as far as impervious goes. They will be adding five parking spaces on the west side, with one of those spaces having a handicap access aisle, so more or less equivalent to six spaces. Um, and then the landscaping requirements, planning and zoning recommended eight deciduous trees along the front of the site. And the rest of the required landscaping would be along the east side, which will buffer, uh, the commercial use from future residential. So, um, planning and zoning was unanimous in their recommendation. There were a couple, there was quite a bit of discussion, I don't know if you had a chance to watch, um, the video, but the applicants asked for, um, occasional or very rare onsite auctions, live auctions. Um, in the event, let's say, you know, electricity or internet goes down and they're supposed to have an auction, you know, i- in rare cases. So, um, we phrased it in the conditions that as long as they notify us and those don't become frequent, that we're fine with that, or the planning commission was, as part of their recommendation. And then the other discussion was about the future frontage road. We have it shown now as the southern, um, maintaining a thirty-three-foot strip along the southern part of the property. Um, if it should happen that bid-to-buy wants to expand and, let's say, preserve land for the future frontage road up through the middle of the site, that would work too. Um, we would just investigate that or study that down the road a piece. So, um, and this is, the colored diagram is their expansion plan. So they will likely have to build stormwater ponds at some point when they further expand parking or display areas. That's for them to decide down the road.
So Liz, if we do have the occasional auction, we're not going to park on Viking, I'm assuming, right?
Correct, there, there is a condition that prohibits parking on Viking, right? Yeah, or loading or unloading, yeah. Uh, so our office is in favor of the request.
You think it's currently on old Viking?
Nope.
No, they're currently in Buffalo.
Liz?
Mm-hmm.
Or, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
How many things will be displayed at one time along that road and what types of things will be displayed?
Well, as they indicated, it varies a lot depending on what people bring to them to sell. So some weeks, um, there may be campers sitting out there. Other weeks, there may be, um, you know, large equipment, the, um, backhoes and such. Um, some weeks it might be, you know, higher quality things than others, but they've, they've spoke about putting the nicer things towards the road and keeping it orderly with everything in a line. And then, um, some of the lesser quality items may be backed by the building.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Liz, and then that line of trees, that's supposed to kind of block some of that.
That buffers, um, the effects of all the impervious and the, yeah, the machinery, but still allows viewing as you drive by, you can see through the trees, so it's not a complete screen.
So it's kind of like, uh, both parties being satisfied there.
Yeah, it's kind of a fifty-fifty thing.
Give you some green during the growing season, but doesn't block their show areas. Did you go back to the, the Buffalo?
The pictures?
Pictures. This is what you currently have in Buffalo?
Correct. The top part, the culvert examples.
These are examples of how they would park things neatly into display and people can walk around and view the items.
Typically, they're going to be doing this online.
Yeah.
You're, you're not expecting people to be walking the property except to pick up.
Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of time around, and we've been online exclusively since two thousand and four, so.
People make appointments, right, if they want to come and look.
Correct.
And to pick up items.
So I have a question for Lieutenant Jacobson. What do you see from, you know, bringing this in and obviously you're not going to be there twenty-four hours a day? It's not a fenced area. What, what does the, our law enforcement concerns might you have?
Sure, obviously anytime there's no, no storage of equipment like this, there's potential for theft. Um, obviously you guys have probably dealt with that in the past at other locations. Um, you know, we've had ebbs and flows of thefts in the city, as you guys know from prior reports. Catalytic converters are a, a problem here. Some of this equipment will have that, some won't. Um, you know, obviously you guys will provide your own, uh, camera systems, security systems and, and you guys will be, I'm assuming, making those efforts to protect your own property.
And we appreciate any driving through traffic from your staff.
Absolutely, and, you know, you may not know, we're in the process of, um, providing, um, more dedicated patrol here in the city of now than through a new contract. So, um, obviously, construction like this will get the attention of our, uh, of our law enforcement folks that are, that work the roads, so. Um, you know, sounds like you guys have been doing this quite a bit, so you'd, you'd be aware of those, uh, concerns, so. And, um, we always just encourage, especially business owners, we'd rather have you call and have us go check something out, especially if you're remote, remote viewing something, and have us go look and have it not be an issue than to, to say, ah, it's probably nothing and then, you know, it's something, so. Um, Mr. Mayor, you know, we, uh, have a lot of these properties and these types of facilities throughout the county that we, you know, patrol on a regular basis, so, uh, uh, we, we, we would expect some, some type of that activity, but, um, we'll do our best to enjoy that, of course, so.
I, I made, I was thinking about it because just up the road on, on forty-seven, there's a car lot.
Yes, sir.
We've had quite a few stolen vehicles off that car lot.
We have. We've, I, I'm not sure how many, but there have been some, yeah.
We, we had a, a bit more previous year, but.
Okay.
I think people were coming down from a certain facility in a northern border that.
Mr. Mayor.
Claire Stockton.
Um, two thoughts I had, one being, um, now just to skate me. The second one was regarding lighting. Lighting that we really haven't spoke a lot about, but, um, if you choose to do lighting, just work with me on it and we just don't want it to shine off of the property beyond the border.
Makes perfect sense.
That'd be great. And then the other thing, um, was, nothing would prevent them from putting a gate up if they so chose to.
That's what I was going to ask, is the potential for gating.
Yeah, they could if they wanted to.
It's not a problem, I mean, uh, for us to add a gate is, is fine. To speak on our Buffalo lot, which we've been there for ten, ten years at least, we've never had an issue. We're right on highway to Yvonne.
Hmm, that's good.
So.
Would that be your decision? I don't know that the council wants to require a gate, but you.
Well, obviously if there's an issue with developments, we'll put a gate, but from my limited experience, if they want to be in, they're going to do it, so.
Yeah, probably so.
Uh, the, the lighting is important, uh, we do have lighting ordinances. Uh, we did have a, a lot here on the corner where, when it was tractors. They took the lighting in the middle and went out, so you'd come to intersection, you couldn't see anything. So probably the best lighting I've seen is probably St. Patrick's Church over in Oak Grove, because it's definitely heading back towards the building and nothing goes beyond their property line. Um, we do have, when the car lot went in just north of you there, there's a number of people there that are very concerned about the Dark Sky Association and, and the fact that we're, our ordinances do require that, you know, we don't reflect up and we reflect back in, not out from the property. So make sure you're putting together a lighting plan.
And I'm not sure if the grain bin facility will help, but being the, the size of the structure initially, I'm not letting it, I thought it would be able to shine down and stay within the confines of the lot because we have a height advantage, it's already there. So if not, um, well, quite honestly, I do have lighting goals, so.
Um, Liz, I'll go back to the, the impervious plan there.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got the two thousand fifty-five square feet down there in red. How, how do you intend to mark that off? I mean, it looks fine on here, but we know from other developments here that once larger vehicles start moving in, sometimes the retention ponds and, and some of the features we put on here get lost in the movement of, of vehicles.
Yeah, I, I would go out and take a look around and, and just see where that line is right now. I mean, yeah, it's, um.
I mean, does it, does it make more sense to go off the north end of the building and just take your two thousand square feet off there? Because then it's a clear-cut line as opposed to this indiscreet line down here at the bottom, just, you know.
Well, this would just be the limits of the existing gravel is, you know, is, so this is just showing that they wouldn't add any more gravel there.
Okay, so that's, there's nothing there where it's red right now.
Yeah, that's why the line is sort of skewed a little. That's just the limit of the existing gravel and they had proposed to go a little further south. So if they just keep that there, I guess it's up to them, it doesn't matter to me where they remove it. If they'd rather have the display area here, that was my thinking, but whatever.
Um, I, I do believe there might be some hard surface there, it just is kind of all with grass. And the ease of keeping people, uh, easy drive by, I don't think we're opposed to having, uh, the line moved to the building and be in parallel and just leaving the back space in the red.
Oh, up here?
Yeah, so, because if, you check the way it is, or change it around, take, move the red mark up to the north side of the building.
Okay, okay.
I mean, because I don't think the gravel, I don't know how far it is, because it's kind of behind all those trees there already, so.
Okay.
I mean, if it's, if that's something.
It's, it's just easier to maintain.
For ease for you guys to drive by and see, so.
Sure, that sounds fair.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Blake.
There won't be any tarp in this, it's all going to be gravel, the lot, Liz?
Yes, that was part of the.
Except for the parking spaces.
The, yeah, the parking spaces here are going to be concrete. This one is already existing.
Okay.
And then because the grain trucks, um, are still using the site and the large equipment that they get in, um, the exception was, was asked through the interim use permit process to leave it as it is for now.
So in front of the larger building on the east there, is that going to be a parking area too? I mean, you're obviously coming in and out of that building with larger equipment.
Correct.
Yes, so this whole area is, is display here, yep.
How do you get in and out of the building if there's display in front?
Well, obviously they wouldn't block the doors, but.
Yeah, the doors won't be blocked, correct. At least not all, yeah.
Are there two or three over?
There's three, there's three large doors.
We had a, an email from a residence who was watching, resident who was watching our planning and zoning and, uh, is that part of the packet, Frank?
No, I don't believe it is.
Think it was sent out to the council though?
Yes, it was.
So council's aware of that concern? So the question that, that they raised is, if we put the, um, interim use to not require the blacktop here, how does that affect, say, the TOFT developments or other commercial areas that might want to come in and do the same thing? Did you see that email, Liz?
I did not. So, well.
They called it up particularly because it's somebody who apparently watches our planning and zoning regularly and so they're looking at what we required of TOFT and what we're requiring here and they want to know what the distinction is so that we're, we're not setting a negative precedent.
Well, it's strictly at your discretion and if they, if they ask for the exception through the interim use permit based on the traffic, um, that is, you know, something that you are able to do through that interim use permit process because the ordinance specifies that. Um, in cases where there's large vehicles, um, uh, through a site like this. Now, the, the TOFT site, you know, you're dealing with a, um, I guess, larger, more permanent building. Now, the TOFT site, you know, you're dealing with a, I guess, larger, more permanent building, not, you know, not a pole shed situation. It's a, it also meets the architectural standards versus the existing buildings. So, dealing with an existing site versus starting from new, that would be a difference also.
Is this considered commercial?
This is commercially zoned.
And all of the TOFT is industrial?
That is industrial, right.
Except for the residential behind it?
Right. But see, now, the street through, if you have a subdivision, the street would always require to be paved. But we've always allowed, even through this industrial part, that the storage areas where trucks go can be gravel. So that's, you know, a similar thing. This is on-site versus a public street.
Council, other questions? And what, and obviously, looking at what facilities they have here, and they're keeping them well. It's decide, they win the lottery and decide on move down south and sell this. What protection does the city have to maintain the public appearance on a major intersection?
If they sell.
It's one of those things, we always have, you know, the best intentions of the people doing it, and then somebody else takes over, and we have to go back, and what are the teeth in the permitting process that says, okay, if they sell, the interim use permit has to be reapplied for?
Yes, there's a whole zoning verification process with each change. So change in owner, or change in use, or both. You basically back up and you say, okay, how much parking do they have? You look at all your ordinance requirements, and then they come back, right, with a separate permit, or, you know.
So under interim process, if they sell to somebody else, they automatically get what they have?
Correct. The interim use permits go away. The multiple buildings CUP stays, because obviously, buildings aren't going to go away as easily as the items being stored on the property. So, when they sell, the interim use permits go away.
So Liz, it says outdoor storage, so does that mean we would allow 22 tarp RVs sitting out there all winter?
No, we did specify, it's basically display, they need the IUP for the auto sales, used auto sales, to transfer the titles. But now, there is a condition saying no junk, no tires, no auto parts, yeah.
And that was, that was one of the things that, again, this is, this is where the conditions have to be identified, because with that said, right now, if there's, I think it was typically 60 days, you had said?
That's a typical term of time.
But in the middle of winter, you may not be turning around RVs that quickly. The concern becomes, it's a convenient spot to park your RV for the winter, and put your tire covers on and throw a tarp over it and.
We're not, we're not in a storage business, so that, nobody will be wanting it, so. We're strictly in the auction, it's sales. But I believe there was language in there that there has to be turnover in 60 days, not be sitting outside for the.
What was the clause, you know, the turnover, because sometimes 60 days is, obviously, you're trying to make money, so you're turning it over as fast as you can.
Occasionally will happen, we do a lot of paperwork, and there can be legal staff who is regarding getting title and clear access, because they're relying on the courts to grant us permission to sell. Occasionally, that'll take longer. Obviously, those pieces would not be out in front of the road. Those would be tucked off to the back, because we can't sell them. We have limited space there that we need to utilize to show people we have to sell. We hope that, in most cases, we will be able to put a lot of that stuff in the larger building and keep it out of sight, out of mind. You know, everything is subject to change. I mean, like, earlier, we simply don't know what we're going to get to sell. Well, one day, it's cameras, next day, it's tractors, construction equipment. You take a look at our website, you can see the Biden writing. So, the other thing is, is we do allow a reserve on items, so they could put a minimum, say they want $25,000 for a dozer. So maybe we put that on the May auction, doesn't give reserve, put it on the June auction, and it sells. Sometimes we try a piece two times in a row.
Okay.
Do you have a standard of what you, of what you will purchase, or what you're willing, I mean, you're not going to take any piece of junk?
No, we, we will, there is a standard. We look at the pieces that come in for consignment, and we don't want, things, yeah, junk, taking up space.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Claire Stockman.
So, yeah, Condition 11 is regarding auction items not stored within the structures. May not be displayed outside longer than 60 days.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, Condition 18 is regarding at no time shall any junk, inoperable vehicles, auto parts, or refuse be stored outside.
Right here, I go there, I think.
Which finding was that, Liz?
Uh, that was the IUP.
IUP for both of them. So, so we're going to have a vote on the conditional use permit for multiple buildings on a single parcel.
Yep.
And individually on the IUPs?
Here it is.
Because we have an IUP for outdoor storage and an IUP for deviation from parking lot requirements.
Right, the two IUPs are together and the CUP is separate.
All right, would it make sense to separate those, so if, if there's an issue with one, it doesn't affect both of them?
Um, I don't find it that critical. I mean, if the, if an IUP goes away, they're both going to go away. In other words, they, I guess, are you?
My concern is, let's say, as we move along here, and I'm anticipating that we're going to be great partners working forward. We want a good-looking city, and they want a good-looking property. But let's say, as we move along here, the parking lot's just not working. It's turned into a sloop, for whatever reason. It comes back, and we say, you know what, we're going to have to talk about paving out or doing something different with that. You wouldn't want to tie up the outdoor storage if there was an issue with the parking area.
Right, but.
Just, you know, obviously, if there's, if there's a problem and you suspend that IUP, you suspend them both, if they're tied together.
Isn't that the point? Isn't that the point with them?
Mr. Mayor?
Claire Stockman.
So the process would be, you're not just going to, you know, out of the blue, suspend it. You would, you would work with the site owner and say, and say, here's, you know, here's our concern. You've got a couple options, you know, we could look at just working with the council on a resolution of, we can do an amended IUP. But in either case, as long as the resident's working with us on it, you know, we're not going to just say, you got to shut your business down, you know. And I can't think of the time that we've ever done that.
No.
If you would like it separate, we can, but it's going to have a lot of the same conditions anyway, because of the overall use.
Well, I mean, if, if it's not going to, not going to send them back, if there's a violation on one, there's a violation on both.
Well, you're allowing the deviation in parking as an exception from requirement to be paved. Maybe the better thing to do is to add a condition specifically related to the gravel surfacing. But I don't know that, you know, if it requires bringing in more gravel, so you don't have, you know, a pond out there. If, if the, I mean, the whole intent is because of the existing trucking, right? The existing trucking, the grain trucks, the large equipment that they're bringing in. If that in itself doesn't change, then, you know, maintenance of the parking lot would be expected like any other site. If they're changing uses, and maybe the grain bins go away, and, you know, now they're selling cars instead of large machinery, now that would be a big red flag saying, okay, now you need an amended IUP. And we may require it to be paved, because we don't, you no longer have the large machinery, et cetera, so.
Other questions or comments? Just one note, Natalie, on the page five of the findings and decision approving of City Council. It says planning and zoning, should say City Council.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Anything else we need to know, Liz? I talked to Frank. Do you think, from the email that we got from the residents, that that distinction between the industrial lots and interim use permit is distinct enough? In your experience, to the general public?
They may not appreciate the distinction between industrial and commercial. Certain ordinance is quite common. They are very detailed. They have to be, otherwise, they're nonsense, or you can't really understand. I'm not sure exactly what you'd do to try and distinguish, unless you flat-out said, well, hard surface is blacktop or concrete, and that's all we accept. There are some cities who will do that.
Which is, we haven't done at this point.
I also look at, I mean, if we looked at what our new requirements were, I mean, this whole site wouldn't make that, right? I mean, it's pole buildings that don't have the right amount of, I'd say, hard base or stone on it. It's a bin site that's still an active bin site that we're going to put some equipment on, so. I understand the need to not have asphalt when you're trying to put grain trucks and tractors on it, because you'll, I mean, obviously, you could design it so that it would do that, but that's a pretty substantial, that's not a parking lot if you're driving that on it. So, I mean, yes, if you're starting from scratch, I'd say it's, it's got to be a lot that will, that would meet the requirement codes, but this whole thing doesn't meet our current requirement codes if we're starting from scratch.
Mr. Mayor? Existing structures.
Claire Stockman.
Yeah, another way to look at it is too, I mean, a 10-acre lot in a commercial district where your minimum lot size is one acre, this is not the highest and best use of the property. This is more like an interim use altogether, you know. You know, the highest and best use would be to divide this up into six lots and, you know, have retail and restaurants and everything else. I mean, that's down the road, because we don't have the population to support that kind of a use. So you need to make sure that you're comfortable with this, but this, you know, I view this as more of an interim use on a 10-acre piece. Now, you know, having said that, yes, it could be there for a while, and you do have to be comfortable with it. But you also have to have some common sense, which is, I think, you know, the reasoning behind the request for the exception, for the paved requirements. And again, it's an existing buildings versus starting from scratch.
Mr. Mayor? Right.
Thank you. So Liz, if, I think what's behind all of this is the concern that gravel is hard surface, but it's not. Get it wet enough. It's, it becomes pretty malleable. What happens, I'm presuming these guys want to maintain these, the properties, the parking areas, because they're the ones moving the equipment around. They didn't want it all messed up after they cleaned it. But let's pretend for a moment, they don't. What are our steps to try and ensure that this parking area stays looking like a parking area and not a morass?
Mostly our administrative citation process. So, we would send a letter, and then a notice, and then eventually citations if they're not, you know, it should be puddle-free for the most part, and, you know, weed-free. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't turn into, yeah, a weedy, muddy.
So that shouldn't, and is that in ordinance? I mean, what, if you're going to go down the path, the path of potentially citing, what would you be citing? We've given, we've given the deviation from the paving.
Right. Well, you have a point there, so maybe what you need to do is add some.
14 years doing this, we have, or we've missed conditions before, they come back to haunt us, so.
Agreed, agreed.
We're not trying to make your life more miserable. We're just trying to make sure we can.
Well, that, you know, is plain as day. Let's just put it in here then, so that we're all on the same page. And that, yeah, we, you know.
Because that makes sense. It's an interim use permit. You put the conditions on there that are part of the permit.
Right.
And then it's clear, you guys know what's expected, and if we ever have to come back later because of a complaint, we know what's expected. We say, yeah, this is what we all agreed on. And so if it's, but it needs to be clear, because you can't come back later and say, it's not what I was thinking. It's all, well, it's what we were thinking, so. And we've had those, what I was thinking, and they were thinking, or what the council was thinking, and they were thinking, didn't turn out to be the same, so. It's that reasonable, reasonable expectation. You're going to keep them.
Well, obviously, we can't function if it turns into a, you know, mud valley. There are seasonal times when the trucks and stuff, and this time of year is the absolute worst. There's some softer spots, and, you know, we, obviously, we had some thoughts on some grading and some draining and additional top surface, but we were, you know, kind of holding off until we, until we, you know, mature them through. Yeah, we absolutely, I hate that, so trust us.
So we say puddle-free, level surface, weed-free. Those are conditions you're going to maintain anyway.
Okay, we're going to obviously mow grass. Puddle-free, I'm going to be honest, I don't know. I mean, somebody, somebody moves a tire on a big truck or an articulated loader, and I don't, it comes and rains, and I don't rate it that second. I got a puddle.
Yeah, so we need to, again, clarify what that means.
Yeah.
You know, stand it. You're going to fix that when the weather's appropriate.
Correct, correct.
But if you're, if you're going season to season, and that isn't fixed, then.
Yeah, totally agree. I agree with you on that end of it. I just want to lay it out there that, you know, when you have big, heavy equipment and you move it, a dozer, a skid, you know, a skid loader, for heaven's sake, so you could turn a little sharp, it's going to create a ridge, and it's going to create a puddle to rain. Of course, we're going to maintain it and drag it and break it, but I mean, you know.
And if you've got a soft spot that keeps sinking, you'll probably get.
Got to figure out how to fix it, yeah. This, this is going to be our flagship location, so it's going to be a representation of how we run our business, and we don't want that to look more, you know, to go south, so.
So is that sustained standing water on the impervious surface?
Standing water, not for prolonged periods.
Sustain, yeah.
Yeah, something like that. Is that reasonable?
That sounds more reasonable, I think, more understandable for me, I guess.
If the kids are hiking down to your parking lot with their cane poles, we know we got a problem.
You know, you got a problem.
All right, anything else? We've got two items here, conditional use permit for multiple buildings on a single parcel, which basically carries through until the. parcel, which basically carries through until the grain dryers are no longer in use. At that point, we modify, and then we have the interim use permit for vehicle sales and the deviation in the paving requirements. 28 conditions on the interim use.
49 with the addition on the gravel.
Yeah. And then 18 on the conditional use. Anything else? Council, Liz?
That's it.
Frank?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, seeing nothing else, I consider a, entertain a motion on the conditional use permit for multiple buildings on a single parcel.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I make a motion to approve this conditional use permit to allow multiple buildings uses on a single parcel at 5160 Viking Boulevard. With all the, with all the conditions that were just mentioned.
29.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Greenberg.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Alders, any further discussion? Seeing in the hearing, none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Second motion is for interim use permit for outdoor storage and display of large items, used vehicle sales, interim use permit to allow deviation from parking lot surfacing requirements with the conditions as amended to address the parking lot. Liz, do you have wording?
Yeah, where did I put it? Yeah, to maintain the gravel parking area in good condition without standing water for prolonged periods and relatively weed free.
Satisfactory?
Does it sound all right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Council satisfactory?
Mm-hmm.
All right, entertain a motion on those interim use permits.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I also make a motion to approve these two interim use permits to allow the outdoor storage and display of used vehicles and deviation from parking lot surfacing requirements with that one amended commission, condition on top of the other condition.
Motion by Councilmember Greenberg.
I second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Blake, any further discussion?
Thank you.
If I clarification for both interim use permits, that's what I.
Both interim use permits, yes.
He may.
Any other discussion?
With, for the IUP, just referencing the amended site plan as we talked about the impermeable.
Oh, that is correct, so we're moving the impermeable to the north end there and aligned with the building and so that the south end of that building can now be used in front of the building.
More or less.
Yeah, more or less, right, okay.
All right, Councilmember Greenberg, you okay with that?
I am.
Councilmember Blake?
Oh, yes.
All right, anything else? Seeing in the hearing, none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your patience, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with all of you. Yeah, I'm sure to be a super villain.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for.
And you've made the note on the conditional use permit? Make the note on the conditional use permit then?
Yes.
All right, council items. We have a resolution here. Councilmember Blake and I have been working with Frank, we've reviewed opportunities for working with a firm to help recruit and assist the city in selecting a new city administrator. After review of those, we have a recommendation of, as you see on the RCA here, to work with David Drown and Associates, DDA, as the firm that we would move forward with. A complete proposal, a proposal is for complete work at total cost of $22,000, provide a 24 month redo if the candidate selected is unsuccessful in a two-year period for any reason. If they leave or are asked to leave, we get a duel. We've looked at two other firms, I've mentioned the RCA, and our recommendation is to go with DDA, keep this process moving forward. You have the information in front of you for that?
Sounds reasonable to me.
All right, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2022 DA 17 to approve a firm to recruit and select a new city administrator for the city of now then, and that firm would be DDA.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Blake.
Second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Alders, any other questions? Seeing in the hearing, none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, could we possibly, would the council entertain the possibility of taking, undertaking C, D, and E and then taking up B that will allow Ms. Johnson to leave prior to that conversation, I think it's just a point of courtesy.
All right. Council okay with that? I'll give it down to item C.
Yep.
Item C, City Council Priority List of Objectives. Originally, the request was, what do we want to do from when we asked, we're asked about this, what do we want to get done by July 1st? Obviously, the most important thing, the most risk is a new city administrator. What else do we want to get done here, elections, we got four out of five second place votes, obviously, election's gonna be on us sooner than we think and we have to make sure we have trained personnel in place and are meeting training deadlines and notification deadlines. So those two things are obviously top priorities and staff's working on. Are there other things that council would like to bring forward at this time?
Mr. Mayor, what's the question?
Question is, we were asked to bring forth five priority list items, the consensus was get us a new administrator. And make sure we're ready for the elections. You can see the spreadsheet here.
I got that, so that's one and two, so that question is, what's the consensus on three, four, and five?
Yep, and do we think in the time left between now and July that any of those are?
Well, the budget we have to do, don't we? I mean, isn't, I mean, that's not really a choice, is it?
None, we gotta get going.
So that would be three, wouldn't it?
I, I like that idea, number three being the budget.
Yeah, I do too.
Should we just follow row number two there?
I like it.
So what's bandwidth beyond number three?
Well, four, two, three, did all three people, three people take the internet there or is that just two?
I guess I'm just asking Frank, do we have bandwidth beyond one, two, and three?
To get those accomplished, is that the question?
That's the question.
I, I see. It depends on what it is, I'm sorry for repeating.
Full-time administrator, making sure we're square on elections and setting us up for a successful 2023 budget.
I think though, they need to be accomplished or at least taken to a certain point by virtue of statutory timelines.
So July, it's July.
So, yeah, two and, two and three should be doable.
So July, it's July 1st, right, that's the, so you got.
Send off, yes.
That's six weeks.
No.
Eight weeks?
10 weeks.
May, June, well, okay, yeah, it's eight, it's eight to 10 weeks, I guess.
We'll have moved forward on, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Frank?
We will have moved forward on those, to suggest though, that somehow we would accelerate the budget timeline, that's not gonna happen, that would be a violation, but we can get up, make sure we get up to speed, that's where we should be, similarly on the elections. And frankly, on both of those items, nothing's happened at this point. So there is some work to be done.
So let me, let me, I'll just say why I went with what I did. We have a, a capital plan that we're working on, you know, looking at how we're going to get that prepared for as part of the budget, so I, I assume that to be part of the budget process, because the capital plan needs to be in place so that we can budget accordingly. I looked at the key city documents to identify, locate, update, what Frank's been calling a paint-by-numbers instructions. The, the issue there is, come July 1st, Frank does disappear, are we making sure in the interim, this next eight to 10 weeks, we're documenting everything we can so when he does disappear, whoever comes in and takes his place has as easy a transition as possible? And that's why I looked at that as being one of the key things, because a lot of these things will be put in the hands of whoever comes next.
So we're.
Road projects, there are things that we talked about this year to do under a maintenance plan, but road projects really are something we have to do a feasibility study for in the fall. Frank will be. Councilmember Alders?
Didn't we approve a resolution to have an outside firm do some of that standard work for us?
As far as the maintenance?
Financial? Yeah, that was what you were saying.
Alders?
Yeah, there's a lot more documents than just the financials.
So this is non-financial paint-by-numbers block and tackle?
Yeah, this is, this is recycling, this is building officials, you know, how do you process things when they come in? Website, and these, these are all the things, we, what we've learned on the city newsletter now needs to be captured so then the fall it can be repeated without all the volunteer help. So it's, it's the day-to-day things that they're doing that you wanna make sure they keep up in a organized fashion, and that's part of, the focus would be, how do we make sure what it, whatever it is, including the financials, obviously, Alders would be putting together some of those policies for us, but the step-by-steps are important. Yeah, I think even, even looking at assembling packets, you know, when we've got council packets and planning and zoning packets, what is the step-by-step process, so we've all agreed upon it, so it's repeatable.
So who's coming up with the list of standard work that's gonna get completed?
Up to paint-by-numbers, is that the question? We're doing it on a day-by-day basis when it gets right down to it, the things that happen most frequently, and these folks are the ones doing the paint-by-numbers, and that's important, because they should be the survivors, they should be the ones that provide the continuity from now until the future, whatever the future is, hopefully on July 1. Doesn't do much good if I walk away with that in my head, and so that's one of the reasons we wanted to put those things in writing, by them, for them, and for others in the future. And it's not like we've made up a master list of, here's all the things we wanna do. The thing that tells us what to do is how often we do it, and there are things we do again and again and again, and so they take the vast, the most amount of time, they can be simple, they can be complex, and so if we address them, now we can conserve on time and we can provide that chart, their paint-by-numbers, for those who come here in the future.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, Joe, that's the, if the rest of the council is okay with that, I'm, I'm saying I'm good with that as far.
Sure.
And then I'd, I'd put the, the well for this building and fire station and parks.
So that's capital projects, right, that's the, and that's.
And that's a particular one on that.
That's the.
It could be done by that time.
That's the priority for the capital projects that you'd like to move forward with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Is this the four and 12 that would supply the fire department?
Nope, this would just supply the ice rink and the, this building and the fire station and the parks. So replacing the one that sits right out here that failed last fall.
Mr. Mayor, that's not the hundred and some thousand dollar one?
No, no, that's, that's a, that's a much bigger well.
Is that a six inch, eight inch, how big is that one?
It's gonna probably be at least eight, I don't know what, what Adam has been sizing there, but I think the one that we looked at, that the private party might be a 12-inch well, about 480 feet deep.
So this well will serve as what?
This would serve this building.
Building, city buildings.
The fire station, the park pavilion, the park hydrants, and the ice rinks.
It would build the ice rinks?
It would, it would, yeah, we'd be using.
That's what we'd use to block the ice rinks?
We wouldn't have to go down and run the trucks back and forth.
287 trips with the truck.
I think it was only 280 this year and we ran out of season, so.
And you'd have the ice rink before the end of January?
Yeah, wait.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So am I.
Joel?
Yep, agree.
So we're doing full-time administrator, priority one, elections priority two, budgets, timeline, priority three, priority four is keep going on the standard work, and priority four is capital projects, and other capital projects, it's the well.
Good.
And I would say that, that part of the budget process and timeline is obviously we have to factor in what capital improvements we need to budget for this coming year. All right?
Yeah.
Council's good on that?
Yeah.
Good for you, Frank?
That is terrific, thank you.
All right, item D, internet report. As you had seen, the person we've been working with the county, Samantha Markman, has tendered her resignation, she's moving to private, of course she is. You know, the county grows good people and, and the private parties see that and snatch them up. So, we, we are waiting to hear back from her, the county has approved a contractor to work on doing a survey for unserved areas in the county. The initial information we've received yesterday from a resident was that a contractor had been selected, the county is in the process of creating surveys which they will send out to county residents, I don't know if that's just in the potentially underserved areas, unserved areas. We don't know yet, so we're waiting to hear back from Samantha, she has four weeks, four weeks left, I believe. So we're waiting to hear back what the county status is on their survey and where more county money may come from. We have a meeting scheduled next Wednesday, a Zoom meeting with the Comcast team who's been studying the now-then and surrounding communities to see what is likely they might be able to do, so that's next Wednesday afternoon. The internet for this building, the city offices and the fire station, has been hooked up, we just now have to get it attached so we can start using it at our meetings. But shortly thereafter, the phone system should be coming in, so we'll be adding a new phone system, that one, I don't know, it actually works, we never knew that, and the one, the fire station works, and nobody ever knew that, so. But we will be getting a new phone there, a new phone in the fire station, and a new set of phones, voice over IP in the city offices. Those are hooked up, the internet is as far as the city offices, so it is available to business. The Internet is as far as the city offices, so it is available to businesses in our business community, those that would like to work with Arvig. Arvig is available to hook up businesses. CenturyLink is also in the Business Park for those that would prefer CenturyLink. We're in discussion with Arvig to try and continue service westward down 201st, all the way to the lake. The question is, can they do that under the monies we've already committed or would they need additional funds for that? Additionally, Arvig is looking to present us with a plan for what does the rest of the city look like? What would their build-out look like, starting in the south where they have fiber and working their way north? We have not heard anything back from Midco, potentially coming down from the north. We'll know from, more from, like I said, Comcast on Wednesday. What's that likelihood is there? And we have not heard any update from Arvig. They are working on the grant application for the border-to-border through the deed, Minnesota deed, to see what we can do. That grant application is, needs to be in the spring. The typical decision, I think, is later in September for the state to decide who gets the grant or grants. Mr. Musk is not returning our calls on Starlink.
I can't imagine why he's busy.
Somehow he thinks he's too busy with Twitter. I don't understand that.
He's trying to buy Twitter right now. He doesn't have time for us.
You know, you got $43 billion for Twitter, you can do something in that. But we will keep trying to get a hold of him.
Love your perseverance.
Frank, what else are we missing on Internet? Council, any other questions as far as...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
How many players were there? Arvig, Midco, Comcast?
Midco, we haven't heard anything from recently. They are down in, they've come down as far as parts of St. Francis, but they haven't expressed interest in coming down further yet. Comcast and Arvig are the players right now. And we don't know what Comcast is going to say. In the Business Park, CenturyLink has come to life and is offering services there. One, one business expressed that what Arvig is doing for no additional charge and just a five-year contract, they paid $35,000 for. And at this point, I don't think they're real happy with the service.
Wow.
So Arvig's rates, because of the O East Truck, are pretty good. Arvig has also got a contract now for Eastern Elk River, so they're working on our border over there. But that's the area that they've done for us already, so I don't know that that's going to benefit us, other than Arvig knows that they're going to have equipment in this area. If we can piggyback on them having equipment here already, it's probably going to have to wait till some of that Elk River is done. But we haven't gotten that commitment from Arvig yet. But those are the big players right now. Comcast serves both Co-Grove and Ramsey. So that's why we're trying to see, is it reasonable for them to expand into this area? And they were looking at now-then and the surrounding areas to see what else made sense financially to them.
So...
Councilmember Alders?
I thought we were getting a report done from a couple of individuals that were going to go do, hey, where's our level of service throughout the city? Where's it?
That's the county working on that.
I thought we passed a resolution to pay two individuals to do that.
I don't recall that. County's doing that. They, they're, and that's why we haven't got the specifics on what the county's doing yet. They are sending out surveys to all residents. I don't know if that's in the federally unserved areas or all residents in the county. But that's what their survey, that's what they're paying $700,000 for. I just assume they give us the $700,000 and let us figure out from there, but that's what they're doing. Good luck, right? Anything else on Internet? Let's say, once we hear back from Comcast, I would expect Frank will give an appropriate update after that meeting to the council. And if we hear anything more from Arvig, obviously before then. Right now, we just want Arvig and RBs to help us get set up, so technically, we can have Wi-Fi right here in the building. All right. Anything else Internet? We'll move on to I WIP, or 1W1P, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
So the last two council meetings, I've kind of touched base on the 1W1P. We've been asked to join a larger watershed organization which has access to a million dollars in grants. Our small organization, the U Upper Rum, Upper Rum River Watershed Management Organization, already has access to funds and we can apply for those grants, we can secure them, we can kick in 10%, and we can already get projects done in our city, which Lake George likes to do already, St. Francis likes to do with the Rum River, Lake George with their ditch banks. We just haven't chosen to do that in our area. Making it a larger entity gives a larger pool of money to more people. To me, it's just bigger. I personally like the smaller organization that I meet with, you know, the Upper Rum. I know what's happening at Lake George. I can drive over there and see it if I want. St. Francis doing, you know, Rum River Water Bank stuff. I can go there and take a look at it. I'm not necessarily going to drive up to Millax Lake to see if the waterfront up there, if it's the money that they're asking for, if I agree with that. I just think personally that's way up there. I like the Upper Rum. It's local, St. Francis, you know, East Bethel, Ham Lake, Ramsey. So I like it being smaller. I don't think we need to join the 1W1P. I don't think that it's detrimental to the city. I think the only thing that may happen down the future would be more, how do I put this? Time, tape, possibly expenditure, just because it's larger. But we would be making decisions as a very large entity to monies that are going to be going a very, you know, a long ways away.
Watershed think they'll continue to operate?
What's that?
The Upper Rum River think they'll be able to continue to operate?
Yeah.
I mean, anybody bailing from the Upper Rum River to join this? That you know of?
It's early in the stage. We've had one city who said, I don't see a problem. We've had another city that said, we don't want to join. The rest have not commented. However, today, I would like for us to determine if we're going to join or not because our next meaning, meeting, I want to be able to say now-then weighs in as length.
All right.
And your recommendation is to not join?
My recommendation is to not join. I don't think it's necessary. So any discussion on that?
I'm kind of slanted in the pros and cons.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Frank?
A question, maybe it was in the summary here, but is the decision irrevocable? In other words, we decide to stay with the existing water management organization, whatever it turns out to be? Because it could be two or three or four, or it could be the entire group that you've got right now. And we say, no, we want to stay together, but two years from now, man, that seems like a good idea. Do you know if we can change it?
I know for sure if we joined and had purchase regret, we could unjoin. I know that for sure. I think it's possible to join in the future if we felt, you know, like we're being left behind. I'm not absolutely sure on that, but...
So the other thing, let's say we decide not to, and you go there and it's just us and that one other city, and everybody else in the watershed decides to bail. Is this something that we can do? I mean, obviously, they're not even existence until July 31st, so it looks like June 1st to July 31st is the window. If you go back to the, to the Upper Rum and say, we're not interested, and then it turns out the Upper Rum's going to dissolve anyway because nobody else wants to stay around, we can re, revisit it at that point, do you think?
I'm not quite sure how to answer that question, but I do know this. If we are in a minority in the Upper Rum and most of them want to join, then the Upper Rum will join. So we're all weighing in at this point, and then at the Upper Rum, we're going to vote, and each city is going to cast its vote. Where it's going to fall, I don't know.
All right.
What the future is of the 1W1P, if the Upper Rum is not in it, I don't know that either. They may determine, hey, we have enough for the 1W1P, we're moving forward, and in two years, they may require it, or in two years, the city of now-then may say, hey, we're really missing out.
Well, and see, the thing is, they're not even going to have a draft of the JPE until June. So I mean, we don't even know what we'd be signing if we said yes, we don't even know what we'd be signing up for.
Yeah. I just know that, you know, in the discussions that I've had with Jamie, he's really wanting us to decide which city, what city is going to do what. So he asked in his last correspondence to me, you know, please get this on the agenda. It actually was to all the cities. Please get this on the agenda, find out what your city wants to do, so.
All right. So what do we want to do, city? Recommendation from our representative on the watershed to say no at this point? Not join the JPE?
I'll support Joel's discussion decision.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I support.
All right, so let's make that a motion. So Joel, is that a motion?
I make a motion that the city of now-then does not join the 1W1P.
All right. And we had two seconds?
I'll send it.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Greenberg, second by Councilmember Alders to not join the 1W1P at this point. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Farmers Market?
Is Anita for me?
Oh, you were first.
Aren't you K? Okay, I'm first, okay. Mr. Mayor, I received a call from Councilmember Green, Rainville, not Greenberg, Rainville, today, and she would like to change this a little bit, the RCA, if we could. And what she would like to do, excuse me, she wants to add logistics coordinator. This person, she wants to add this, delivery and return of market trailer, trail, trailer?
Trailer.
Trailer, that's right, to, and from the city offices, setting and tearing down a parking area, set up and tear down of signage and feather flags and other duties as assigned. And so what change she wants to make is that the city council appoints Jade Warren as market coordinator and Darlene King, market manager, and approves stipends of 500 for each position for the, that's, for the 2022 farmers' market payment should be made upon council approval. Then she said to council, to the city council, she wants to appoint Pat DeMars, logistics coordinator, Jade Warren, market coordinator, and Darlene King, market manager. And she wants to change this now, so the approved stipends would be $250 to Pat DeMars, $250 to Jade Warren, and $500 to Darlene King as their positions in the farmers' market payment should be made upon council approval. So she's not increasing the amount we agree upon, but she thinks it should be spread out among three instead of two is what this amounts do. Because this, DeMars is not on here, but I guess is quite active. Okay? Does, do you have any questions on this?
So...
So I'll send this to you.
So Darlene is...
Yes, please.
I'll just send it over to you.
Okay. Because I missed some of the names, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I know, I will. I'll just send this email. I thought she might have even sent it, but I suppose she has to get it okay before she can send it. I can't do it.
All right, so the amount of money is the same?
Yes.
The clarification we missed last year was this would be paid upfront because the work's being done now.
Yes.
Rather than at the end of the season.
Yes.
But the numbers don't change, it's just clarifying there would be two market coordinators, whether a market coordinator and a logistics coordinator and a market manager.
Right.
And the two coordinators would get 250 for the season and the manager would get 500.
Right.
Otherwise, everything else on the RCA is as stated.
Yes.
You can send the email from Councilmember Rainville to the city office and they can get the...
I will.
Responsibilities of the logistics coordinator and the spelling of everybody's names.
Sure.
All right.
So I'd like to approve this.
You make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution of 2022-10, appointed now-then farmer, now-then farmers' market manager, oh, no, I have to change this, sorry, coordinator and logistics coordinator? Is that how we're doing, is that what you call it?
Market manager, market coordinator, and logistics coordinator.
And logistics coordinator, authorizing their stipend and approving administrative and public works staff support for the market.
All right. Councilmember Blake makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Greenberg? Seconds, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Voluntary cost-sharing agreement for Anoka County Economic Development. Councilmember Alders, you pulled this one?
Yeah, can I just get a little overview of what this is? I don't know that I'm familiar with it, and I looked through this packet a couple times, I'm not 100% sure I can find it, so.
So you... What we may have is...
Not the packet, the book. Because when you look through the book and you have trouble...
It's probably on me, but I wasn't super comfortable just saying, all right, I'm going to just let this sit all through without knowing exactly what it was.
Okay, so the county provides economic development support. This is the gal who just tendered her resignation, Samantha Markman, previously was a Jekyll Hyder, and they're the ones that are helping us through things like Internet proposals, working with the county on that. They also have been sending out typically to Liz, to Frank, businesses that are looking for opportunities in our community. So they're saying, we have a business who's looking for this type of property, either existing or to build. And so what they do is, the county, they're trying to make sure that the county has opportunities to develop economically. And obviously, the most important thing for us has been the Internet. Because without that, a lot of businesses and even residences are going to struggle coming out here because they don't have Internet. We have not, because we lack sewer and water, we haven't been in the market for a lot of the things they send out. But their job is, they have a program called AC RED, and they meet with the communities of Anoka County. And they do listening and presenting of opportunities. Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
So they have conference calls on a regular basis, opportunities where they work with development coordinators throughout the county. We don't have a development coordinator at this point, so again, ours hasn't been as much. But their 2022 budget is 20,750. Our proportional share is $259 for the year.
Okay, I'm good.
I think we can handle it.
I'm good.
One of the few things we can handle.
So if I could have found it and seen it was true, I would have said, no worries.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to approve item K on the consent agenda for the approval of resolution 2022-14, the voluntary cost-sharing agreement.
I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Alders, second by Councilmember Blake. Motion by Councilmember Alders, second by Councilmember Blake. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay.
And we have one last thing, item B. We have a resolution in front of you, 2022-15. Frank, this is your proposal, you want to walk us through it?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to think and rethink the strategy, uh, which we were implementing, have been implementing all along with respect to personnel. A basic assumption has been that it is critically important for your new administrator to be able to take what action he or she may want to take with respect to our existing personnel, namely Natalie and Adrian. Uh, it occurred to me that that was very important, and yet, the more I thought about it, I realized that you're bringing in an administrator who is supposed to be dynamic and thorough enough and, uh, confident in his or her own skills, that they're willing to take whatever actions they believe that most appropriate to serve the community with respect to, uh, each of those people and the positions they occupy. Uh, as a result, I concluded that really, one of the most important things to do is retain those two individuals. Why? Because really, we have been pouring money into them since we hired them in mid-November, intentionally. We tried to train them in the business of local government. Neither of them had extensive experience in that area. But both were very, very willing to learn, and I think if you talk to the public, certainly tell me if I'm wrong, but if you talk to the public, I believe that you'll hear that they do an exceptional job in their customer service, uh, in their attitude, in their desire to take on challenges, because this has been one of the bigger challenges, uh, I've ever seen. Uh, and so consequently, it occurred to me that what we really should be doing is doing whatever we can to retain these individuals, whatever we responsibly can. And so I've talked to each of them a little bit about this. Uh, in the one case, uh, Adrian, uh, she is at the point in her life where she is looking for full-time work. And right now, it is interim, temporary interim work. This would entitle her to some of the benefits, well, all of the benefits that are set forth in the personnel policy, which I'm sure you're, uh, familiar with. It would, my recommendation, increase her, uh, hourly rate of pay. Uh, and in part, because it's common sense. She actually provides extensive work direction to an individual making $16 an hour. She presently makes 50, that's not a good arrangement. And so arbitrarily, I'm suggesting that her rate of pay be increased to $18 an hour. So at least you have a pyramid starting to form. Um, I believe that, well, I know from our discussions that, uh, by becoming a full-time employee with benefits, we'll keep her here. Now, things can change, I appreciate that, but we're taking affirmative action to keep her here. Natalie is a little different story. Uh, Natalie is, of course, uh, she and her husband had a Dairy Queen, they, uh, they've got a couple of other businesses, they still run. She's looking for a little bit more flexibility, but she wants to stay here as well. She's enjoying what she's doing. She gets paid $40 an hour at the other jobs that she has. Now, there are no benefits associated with that, but she is able to secure health insurance, which is satisfactory to her needs. The suggestion there is to make her an independent contractor. We save some money along the way, I'd have to calculate it out. There are some savings to the city. We no longer would pay any FICA, FICA social security. Uh, we'd, we would pay no more PERA, uh, for her, um, as we do right now. We would simply pay the $40 an hour. She'd want to work 32 hours a week, we'd integrate those two together, and there's no question, uh, that the administrator is going to have to, uh, provide some of that time as well. And, and that's been the way we've been working, uh, thus far. So the purpose, uh, or the recommendation to you is to convert those employees, each of them respectively, as I've outlined. What's the impact? Well, there's a cost increase, uh, of about, what do I have here, uh, 20?
25 grand.
25 grand, thank you very much. Uh, we could burn up 25 grand finding new people and training them again. Uh, we have put money, by the way, in, in Natalie, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it, with Elers, teaching her, uh, the financial aspects, uh, government finance, which is a whole different world than private sector business finance, which she knows considerable about. And so I would hate to have gone down the line here, started getting people, the right people in the right spots, and then to lose someone because of a crazy market, because of hourly wages that can come out and grab people. Um, but I think that these steps would prevent that, and that's the intent here.
Questions, council?
How many hours is, uh, Adrian working today?
She's working about 32 right now.
So we'd move her up to 40 hours a week?
No, no, I'm sorry, and, and she would be 30, she'd stay at 32. Uh, she's got some flexibility too, in the hours she works, which comes in handy.
So we don't have either one at 40?
Yes, you, well, no, you don't. Because, because you remember, we started them as a job share interim employee.
But I thought she wanted to go full-time.
Yes, Adrian wants to go full-time.
That's 40-hour week?
The policy, the policy says, has designated full-time. We, we get to designate what full-time, and when benefits kick in. It doesn't have to be 40 hours.
So I'm still confused, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I'm still confused, are, is she going to work a 40-hour a week to become, get full-time benefits?
Uh, as your personal policy is presently reads, yes, it's 40 hours. That's not how the ones I'm familiar with read.
Yeah.
You give yourself a little flexibility. Why would you work for a person 40 hours when 38 can do, or 35 can do, and still give them benefits? So what you do, you have the power to designate people as full-time or as interim or as independent contractors. You did that with me and we entered into a contract. So you have that flexibility to be able to mix and match, uh, to the extent you're not discriminating against, you know, similarly situated individuals. So to, just to clarify, Natalie would like 32 hours a week, that's her ideal, but she's flexible on that. She'll, she'll, uh, stretch.
Yes.
Uh, Adrian would like 40 hours a week. There'll be weeks where she can't because she's got kids as well, so I mean.
So the, the proposal would be a 40-hour a week, but it wouldn't always be a full 40 hours?
Correct.
And for Natalie as an independent contractor, there would be a contract?
Yes. And we could use the one you've done for me, your, your city attorney has reviewed it. Obviously, there'd have to be a number of changes.
All right, and then, uh.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
My concern has been from the beginning, which I've expressed to you before. We can't have that office not being staffed. We can't, if we don't have full-time and if we're having this flexibility that they might not be there. Uh, if we have office hours, we need to keep office hours. We're a city office, we're not a barber shop. We, so we have to have some way that we make sure that that office, someone is manning that office for the hours we say we're open. We can't put a sign on the door and say, well, we, we'll be back at 1:00 or, you know, or we're not, we'd have to close at 2:00 today, because we owe that to our city, that's all I'm saying.
And then, my understanding is, you've been pretty regular.
Between the three of us, sometimes there'll only be one person there, but it's covered, at least. And there are occasions where I'm, I'm the least confident in terms of the breadth of ability, and so sometimes it's, can I have that person call you back in an hour or what have you?
But typically, you, you would be able, with Adrian at full-time and Natalie at her 32, you would run more reasonable, normal office hours.
Yeah, well, the 10 to 5, if that's acceptable, that's, that seems to work, and we've, we've fallen into a, I think.
Well, we always spend earlier than that. We used to be seven, weren't we?
Well, they like to take Friday off.
Oh, okay, so we're not taking Fridays off anymore.
I hope so.
No, we don't take Fridays off.
Mr. Mayor?
Right.
When you're trying to keep an office open between three people, you're already stretching those three people. Because I'm going to guess what you want to want, want out of your city administrator is to get out of the office once in a while, in fact, more than once in a while. Meet the businesses, become part of Chamber of Congress, be, be engaged in the community, not just locked in those offices. There's supposed to be an external person, um, you know, representing the city. So there may be yet another, I just want to be straight with you, uh, yet another position asked for. It may be a part-time position, but if you want to really truly have that kind of coverage, it may be necessary to have another person to do it. And in exchange, you should be able to get your, uh, city administrator out of the office to a greater degree, when there is value. I'm not just saying that they go off to lunch, that's not.
And then right now, the 10 to 5 is a seven-hour day, and we have, in policy, our, our lunch break is unpaid. So that could be, we could open earlier.
Yes.
And, and be covered, because I would guess that if they're, we're going to work full-time or 32 hours, Natalie's working four days a week?
Yeah.
So that's an eight-hour day, so she's eight there, eight and a half. If Adrian's going to typically be doing 40-hour weeks, uh, she'd be there eight and a half as well, five days a week typically. So the hours could be adjusted accordingly. I'm assuming if that's what they're working, they're probably in there before the building's actually open.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's absolutely correct. Uh, and a lot of times, they're here at 8:00 or 8:30.
So to, to Councilmember Blake's point, we can establish standard hours, and 95% of the time, that's what it's going to be, short of a flu bug or an accident or.
Okay.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, what was our cost structure before, uh, um, I'm going to say in 2020, the spring of 2021? We had two team members working in a, um, in the office and we had, uh, a city clerk. So what were the wages of our two people in the office?
Uh, the deputy clerk was 22 and change, I'm not quite sure how much, but she was 22. And when she was on leave, the administrative assistant, uh, was boosted to her wage. I'm not certain if she went back down, um, when the deputy clerk came back. So, um, when they were, uh, I think the administrative assistant was working, committed to two days a week and maybe three.
Okay.
And they were working 10-hour days.
Okay. I, I mean, my, uh, input is, I'm okay with the, uh, full-time conversion at $18 an hour. I guess I'm not okay at the, uh, uh, $40 an hour for a contractor. If we want to keep that position on until we get a full-time administrator, um, and then have them look for a position, but I, it's a full-time role. It's not a contractor role, in my opinion. Why would we pay a contractor wage to do that when we could do it at a lower cost to the city?
You know, it, it's a good point. When I discussed this with the league independent of this conversation, but, uh, when we engaged Elers and I went to the league and said, you know, what, what are the options out there? Because, you know, can the league provide some supporting services to us, to their, um, financial group, their HR group, their IT group? They do limited support that way, but they said, you're, you're going to have to do something on a part-time basis. You're going to have to have a contractor. And, um, their, their anticipation, not this one, but the League of Minnesota Cities, we're saying in general, because I said, if we were looking for a financial director like St. Francis has, um, it's well into the six figures. And they said, if you were to go to an ABDO or an Elers or any of these, uh, firms that provide, um, part-time financial services, you're going to be in six figures. And I said, no, I'm, I'm not looking for a full-time. And they said, oh, full-time's going to be more than that, they'll be upper sixes. Well, upper, they'll be 120-plus. And they said, if you're going to go part-time, uh, these firms, because right now, uh, financial, uh, accounting types are being fought over. They're resigning in, in mass from cities, and those that, uh, cities that lose their financial directors are going to the agencies of the world, the ABDOs and the Carlson's and the Elers, and trying to hire the same people the cities are trying to hire. So there's a, there's a war going on for that right now, similar to, um, we, I think right now, Big Lake isn't going to be looking for an administrator, St. Francis just hired one, Ramsey's looking. There's, there's competition for financial people and direct, and administrators. So they just said, if you can find somebody, grab them. This is cheaper than any of the agencies we talked to previously. And that's, you know, she does the financials and she does additional things around the office, which we wouldn't expect a purely financial contractor to do, so.
Right, but, I mean, I think we talked about it, her financial background was not government finance, and we trained her up. So I'm okay if we say, let's extend her contract six months so that we have some stability as we do the transition. But I guess I would propose that beyond six months, we look for a, if it's a $20 to $25 an hour full-time person, that we train up so that we have some stability, because as a contractor, there's little skin in the game for them to stay as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think, uh, also the contract will give us flexibility in what you're talking about.
Yeah.
In the future. So in the interim, it's a great solution, but it also allows us the, the flexibility to say, we want to hire in someone full, and then the.
So I'm totally good by saying, let's bring the one on full-time. We can extend the contract and then review it in six months when we have, uh, I'm going to call it Frank 2.0.
Or higher.
And then once we have Frank 2.0 and we have a little bit better feel for what's going on, I, I think you can review it in six months, but I guess I'm not, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to just put out there and open it in a contract that we don't go back and look at and say, is this the right call after we've got Frank 2.0 in there?
Yeah, and I think that, that will be, um, certainly, that's one of the things we, we did three years ago, is one of the, I, one of the obvious advantages here is even bringing Adrian on, we have a six-month probationary period. So that gives the new administrator an opportunity to evaluate staff accordingly. And so certainly, it makes sense to say, maybe the administrator coming in has a strong financial background themselves and needs a different type of person in the office, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, from a stability standpoint, and then from, I, I think it makes sense to bring on the one. Is it a, it's an hourly, it's a full-time hourly position or is it a salary position?
Hourly.
Hourly.
Okay. And core hours need to be established, the expectation is 40 hours a week with some weeks not?
Yes. Now, let's distinguish between the two positions. One is the $18 per hour hourly employee.
Yeah.
40 hours a week.
The contractors would.
The contract, well, no, she, she'd provide 32.
Up to 32.
Probably more 32 than anything else.
Okay.
Occasionally longer, maybe sometimes less. Um, and that's all she gets is salary. There's no comp time, there's none of those other benefits.
Yep.
Um, and honestly, that's what she gets from her other employers. So that's your competition.
And I'm not.
And they're paying him.
And I'm not disagreeing with the money, I'm just looking at it, if this is our long-term strategy to have some, I'm going to say, um, administrative role with some bookkeeping governmental type financial. administrative role with some bookkeeping governmental type financial support, that she had some experience and background and we trained her in on the government side of it. I feel like, is that a position we could go and find and train for a full-time position at a different rate that we do all the benefits on? So I don't disagree that we shouldn't bring the one on full-time, the contractor, if it's 40 with no benefits, it's probably a wash from the 30 to 40. And then it's with the stipulation that it's reviewed in six months with the Frank 2.0 recommendation on what, what he or she believes that we should do.
But hearing you say, okay on the 40-hour a week position and okay on the 30 to 40, but the understanding is that in six months with 2.0, 5.6, whatever it is.
Yeah.
That, that be analyzed.
That's what my recommendation.
It only makes sense, yeah. I, I concur with that 100%.
So we're going up to 40 an hour?
Well, you go 40 an hour, but you lose, they don't get any, we don't pay social security.
PERA and social security.
So it's a, it's a straight contract rate, so.
Right.
You save 6 and 1/2% on social security, so it's, I'm gonna say it's.
It's a wash.
Pretty close to a wash.
Plus PERA though. That's another 6%.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, accept the motion on the resolution 2022-15.
These people, I only have one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I only have one thing that we need to be really, really clear about this six-month thing, so that this isn't gonna be a, a problem and, and hurt feelings or, well, I thought I had the job and so we need to be really clear that in six months, we're, we're gonna evaluate if this is the best, what we want with the new administrator. That's all.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor, please. So you're saying I should package this as a six-month probationary period?
No, it's a six-month contract to be, contract to be reviewed in six months.
In both cases?
No.
The full-time is, is.
Okay.
Policy says six-month probation.
Gotcha.
And the contract is a six-month contract to be reviewed and evaluated.
Thank you.
The con, the contract could be for six months.
Totally, totally. I mean, we could, I don't know what our current contract says, or, or, she doesn't have, she's not, is she working under a contract today?
Nope.
She's salaried.
So whatever contract we come up with is gonna say, it's a six-month contract and we're gonna review it.
Since for sure, we will be reviewing it.
Yeah, typically, typically.
She won't forget.
In a contract we had with Frank, you know, it was X number of months with the option to.
Extend, renew.
Extend and, here's the out clause.
Yep.
Because we don't want the same thing. We want an out clause from her, that she doesn't walk out when somebody offers her 50 bucks an hour.
Right.
They wanna notice, so. But I, but I agree that they're, they're doing yeoman's work there. There's, there's a lot of good stuff going on in the office and.
So I'll make a motion to
There you go.
Convert Adrian to a 40-hour a week full-time employee at $18 an hour with the associated benefits for said role. And Natalie will maintain 32 hours a week with a contract that moves to 40 hours, but it's an independent contractor role, so no other benefits. And it's reviewed in six months with the extension, renewal or out clause. With the mech, with the recommendation from the new city administrator on how he wants his team or how he wants to staff it.
Alright, we have a motion.
Second it.
Motion, Councilmember Alders, second by Councilmember Blake. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, the motions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
One more motion?
Okay, I'm leaving.
One more motion.
A juror?
I motion, that'll be a juror.
Alright.
Freezing.
Good thinking, our jury.
Frank, good thinking on that one.
Oh, thank you. And I, I wanna say that, you know, it's always a tough thing when you're.